The School Board Work Session begins in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in two minutes. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the September 21st, 2023 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at nine o'clock a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Mirroring and modeling how our students begin each day, I know that we just did this in our special board meeting, but I also ask that we please pause for a moment of silence before this workshop begins. Please join me. Thank you. I now ask that the School Board Attorney explain the rules for this public workshop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout the meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, can you please provide the proof of publication for this morning's workshop?
The notice for the September 21st, 2023 Administrative Briefing and Work Session was published in the Ocala Gazette on September 8th, 2023. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Docs under Proof of Publication.
Thank you so much. We will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Dr. Gullett.
Good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Excuse me. My briefing really is just about providing some additional context. Today, you're going to see Goal Two, which is part of our five-year strategic plan, and I think it's important to remind the public that it's important to be transparent about our progress, our work to date, and that this plan is flexible and fluid. We just covered Goal One in a recent work session, and today, we will do Goal Two, which moves us into the four other goals of supporting conditions, I call them, around student outcomes and student success. So we are pleased to do so, but just as a reminder, we continue to adjust the need based on the data and based on the needs of our students. So that concludes my briefing. If we can move into, if you're ready to move into the presentation, okay. So I'll bring Ms. Talbert Irving forward, our Deputy Superintendent of our Curriculum Instruction, to kick this off. And again, Goal Two, a safe and positive working and learning environment. Again, we need to provide the conditions for the work to occur productively. Our goal is to increase student outcomes, and so we need to support not only our students, which is our core business, but also our staff, all of our staff, and create the conditions for the student learning to occur. So Ms. Talbert Irving, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Campbell, Board Members and Superintendent Gullett. Today, we will be presenting Goal Two, A Safe and Positive Learning and Working Environment from our Achieved 2026 District Strategic Plan. I will now turn it over to Dr. Hembrook to begin the presentation.
Good morning. We're going to start with reviewing our baseline data and our targets. As has previously been shared, the baseline data that's generated was created by taking the five-year average of each outcome metric, and then that data was used to set specific targets. So for reducing chronic absenteeism rates, our baseline data was 35.3%, but our target is to reduce that down to 10%, and currently, we're at 33.6%. We also have a goal of to reduce the number of alternative placements. Our baseline data was 422, and our target is 300. Our 2223 data indicates that there were 707, but it's important to note that during the 2223 school year, we did not have the diversion program. So 241 alt placements of those 707 would not have been alternative placements if we had had that diversion program in place. So the actual number of alt placements was actually 466. We're still short of our 300 goal, our target goal, but it was a reduction from the previous year of 2020, 2122, when our alt placements were 519. The baseline data for number of expulsions is 107. Our target is 75. For the 2223 school year, we had 182 expulsions. So clearly, this is an area of focus and growth for the 2324 school year. We also have the increased percentage of students feeling safe at school. So our baseline data was 58.3%. Our target is 90%, although we are striving for that 100%. It's also important just to know that when we have students completing surveys, it's important to understand that current experiences that they experience impact the way that they would complete a survey as well. Increasing the percentage of staff feeling safe at school, that's still an area where we're working towards identifying what those baseline and targets are. And then finally, increasing the percentage of schools that are secure and with camp fences and camera and door buzzers. Our baseline data was 36%. Our target obviously is 100%, and we are almost nearing that target, we're currently at 96%. So this is the framework that's being used by student discipline as we collaborate with professional leadership and learning, mental health and wellness, and the exceptional student education and transportation departments. Schools are using the 10 critical elements of PBIS, or Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. Professional learning was provided to school teams on the development of their school-wide Tier One behavior plans. And additionally, through these collaborative efforts, there's been an emphasis on coaching the capacity of deans at the schools. Finally, supports and professional learning are provided to teachers to enhance their classroom strategies and interventions to strengthen classroom behavior management. In an effort to really focus on reducing incidents in the classroom and on the bus, these two parts of the framework that are starred in yellow for you were a major focus area with the building of capacity of deans that began in January of 2023, as well as the Tier One Classroom Behavior Management beginning this school year. So the key activity here was to provide professional learning opportunities to staff on effective classroom management practices, and that was implemented through a variety of professional learning opportunities, which began with the Student Discipline Monthly Meetings. During these meetings, deans were introduced on the coaching cycle, and part of their training and return was that they were to take that knowledge back to the school site and engage in the coaching cycle with a teacher and a bus driver as well. Additional opportunities included Cagan Win-Win Discipline Training, which was provided over the summer, the Student Discipline Summer Academy, school-wide Tier One Behavior Team Planning, professional learning was provided in August, and professional learning at schools by working with deans on that behavior coaching and professional learning for classroom teachers on the Tier One Classroom Behaviors. So what does the data tell us about all of those different strategies? On this slide, this data indicates that the incidents by classroom and bus are lower when comparing the 2223 school year to the 2324 school year, and this data was pulled reflecting the same timeframe for both of those school years. So during the 2223 school year, there were 2,169 classroom incidents compared to 1,636 for the 2324 school year. Also, the bus incidents indicate fewer incidents when comparing these two school years. The 2223 school year had 461 incidents compared to this school year, where we've recorded 354. We also take a look at comparing Level One and Level Two referrals for the 2223 and 2324 school years, again, for the same time period. As you can see, there's a reduction of Level One and Level Two referrals. The 2223 school year saw 1,285 Level One referrals compared to 1,080 for this school year. The 2223 school year indicate that 2023, 2024 Level Two referrals was reported compared to 1,704 for the 2324 school year. So the key activity three also focuses on providing professional learning opportunities to increase proactivity and restorative justice practices. And to date, some of those activities that we've carried out includes the addition of an interactive Code of Student Conduct on the district's main page. We also created a Canvas course on the Code of Student Conduct. We've also created a PowerPoint. Both of these can be used by schools throughout the school year to review school-wide behavior expectations or when new students enroll at school sites. A supportive enforcement Canvas course, otherwise called diversion, was also created as more of an instructional approach to address those particular behaviors. And to date, actually, I want to say it was when I pulled the data, it was September the 12th, we had 23 students currently enrolled in this course. Professional Leadership and Learning and School Discipline Departments provide school-level focus on these instructional approaches, and the Student Discipline Meetings focus on behavior coaching and data analysis in order to really effectively assist deans to determine behaviors or areas of concern at their school site. The Exceptional Student Education Department and Mental Health and Wellness are partners in these meetings to ensure that deans can coach and they know how to assist students with those specific behavior needs, as well as interventions and strategies to best support students at the Tier Two and Tier Three levels of behavior needs. And so when we look at the results of that, this data indicate that the efforts for more restorative justice practices, as I mentioned previously, we currently have 23 students in the supportive enforcement program or diversion program, and this data indicates that when comparing the same timeframes from last year to this year for the types of suspensions, the average days of in-school suspension is greater this school year compared to last school year, which impacts our out-of-school suspension days. So the 2223 saw a slightly higher average number of days of out-of-school suspension compared to now. In-school suspension allows us to continue with instruction and providing services to students. So as I mentioned, this is the framework that we are using, the Student Discipline Department is using as we collaborate with professional leadership and learning, mental health and wellness, and the Exceptional Student Education and Transportation Departments. So as mentioned, schools are using those 10 critical elements of PBIS, and professional learning was also provided to schools. And I'm happy to say that currently, based on that professional learning and training on those school Tier One behavior plans, 100% of our schools have submitted a school-wide Tier One Behavior Plan. Now I will turn it over to Ms. Hughes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Authentically engaging with family and community is a priority strategy that supports positive learning environments and creating optimal conditions. Our Family Focus, previously known as Parent Partnership, continues to serve as an opportunity for our families, the school district, and community partners to unite and offer relevant information. Family Focus will be offered four times this school year. Our first event was held at Lake Ware High School. The theme was "Take a Walk Down MCPS Lane." Families enjoy sessions such as Building the Path to Resiliency, Navigating Exceptional Student Education, Focus on Graduation, and what is ESOL, among many other topics. To remove the barrier of childcare, we offered student engagement rooms. Families were able to acquire information while students attended their own interactive session. Students engage in a coding activity to navigate their robots with personal tablets. An exhibit hall featured several agencies and district departments. Personnel was onsite to help families set up and gain access to our Family Access Platform. During the 2324 school year, the Family Engagement Team will offer monthly Family Focus virtual opportunities. Each month, we encourage families to join us in the online community as we partner with district personnel and community agencies. Our first event is scheduled on Wednesday, September 27th at 5:30 p.m. Jump Start Your Child's Education will offer support in helping students overcome challenges. It will also highlight our attendance campaign and feature Family Access as a tool to support monitoring of academics and attendance for families. Our topics include Financial Literacy, It's Never Too Early to Start Learning About Money Management, Understanding My Child's Test Scores, and Effectively Communicating With Your Child's School. We encourage families to join us virtually and engage in two-way communication with facilitators. Each virtual session will be provided in English and Spanish. Additionally, the Family Engagement Team is working closely with the Bus Garage Personnel to update the Family Focus Mobile Unit. The Mobile Unit will provide resources to families and technology access for schools and community-based events. During our Leadership Summit, the Steering Committee, which is composed of seven principals, and the Family Engagement Team, provided sessions on family engagement. Each member of the Steering Committee has implemented academic conference teams. Academic Conference Teams allows principals to share school-wide academic data with families, followed by families going to classrooms and seeing how students performed individually on those assessments. Families are given strategies and resources to help strengthen academic standards at home. Academic Conference Teams are a district-wide expectation. Each school is required to host two academic conference team nights this school year. The seven schools that was represented by the Steering Committee have already collectively last year helped 14 academic conference team nights. As it is replicated throughout the district, the seven schools will serve as models for effective execution of the initiative. Fort McCoy was able to measure the impact of coordinated efforts. At their first event, 35 families attended the academic conference team event. Out of the 35 families, 100% of the students maintained proficiency in their quarterly high-frequency words. Six of the students went from 0% proficiency within one quarter to 0% to proficiency within one quarter. The parent and family engagement plans that schools submitted to federal programs were refreshed with new expectations for family engagement, and academic conference team was a required component. The Family Engagement Team has partnered with the Pearl Project to offer a series on trust-based relational interventions. The Family Engagement Liaisons will receive professional learning this year to support their respective schools and families. Family Engagement Liaisons will be equipped with a host of resources for families that may be partnering with parents that have teens that have experienced trauma. The Program Specialists for Federal Programs offers several professional opportunities to school advisory committees to increase their understanding of database decisions. The sessions are designed to build their capacity to be able to identify problem areas and develop improvement strategies to cultivate student achievement. Federal programs offer training quarterly, both virtually and in person. The first one for this year will be held on October 12th. Parents are given the opportunity to provide feedback using data to make informed decisions. They also enjoy having a voice in their child's school. Lastly, I would like to provide some metrics that have been collected. Since August 22, 2022, to date, 278 families have participated in Family Focus. Since July 22nd, to date, 392 families have logged in during the virtual event, during the virtual event, and the sessions have collectively totaled 998 YouTube views. It is our goal to increase our attendance and viewership. The team has created a thorough promo package for the events, complete with a timeline of promotion techniques, flyers, scripted verbiage for social media, newsletters, pre-recorded phone call messages, and also marquee messages. It is our goal that school and community members will take advantage of all our opportunities.
Good morning.
Morning.
Another important piece to focus on when engaging families and community partners is attendance. We have several schools who developed and use attendance response committees or attendance team meetings to analyze their school data, allocate needed resources, and plan for interventions. Schools implemented a variety of interventions and incentive programs across the campuses, sometimes using the spirit of competition to incentivize students and motivate students. Attendance letters were sent to parents, usually following a minimum of three unexcused absences to explain the processes related to absenteeism and truancy. Child Study Team Meetings were held to work collaboratively with parents and families. The purpose of the meetings is to identify existing barriers or issues hindering regular attendance, then talk through possible solutions and needed resources. At the CST meetings, the team typically devises a plan and discusses future monitoring of attendance to ensure the plan is implemented. In the instances where absences continue to accrue following CST meetings and attempts at intervention, parents are invited to a case staffing meeting. Last year, we increased these meetings to twice per month. Community agencies that are invited and participate in these meetings to determine if the family needs additional resources and offer an opportunity to make those connections include DCF, Arnett House, Department of Juvenile Justice, Safe Schools, Community Mental Health Agencies, and our GINS program, which is our juveniles in need of services that works with the Sheriff's Department. Here we can see some data collected regarding child study team meetings and case staffings. The number of CSTs increased slightly from the 2120, 2021, 2022 school year, and we more than doubled the number of case staffings meetings that were held. Additionally, approximately 24 cases were presented at truancy court during the 2022, 2023 school year. The students in each of these cases were found to be habitually truant, and a court order was issued requiring school attendance. It's important to note that some cases take some time to bring, take time to bring before the judge, given steps and documentation that is required. There are sometimes several attempts to serve court subpoenas prior to being heard in court, which also takes time. After a court order to attend school is entered, the student may only incur approved absences, such as those that have a medical note. No unexcused absences are allowed at that time. The family is required to attend monthly probation meetings, and a status hearing with the judge is scheduled approximately every two months to monitor progress with the court order. This slide shows our attendance percentages across the district over time. This data was captured around mid-September, I think it was around September 12th or 13th. Our chronically absent and trending chronic data, which is the red and the yellow lines, were trending down. were trending down, while the percentage of students showing no absence issues, the green line, was trending up. This is exactly what we want to see. The aim is to continue to support consistent attendance and encourage those identified as trending chronic to improve attendance. We know over time the absences tend to increase, so it's important to maintain this trend. A few things to keep in mind. Students are identified as chronically absent if they miss ten percent of the school year. If you take the whole school year into consideration, it would mean eighteen days out of the year. However, proportionately, if we have been in school for approximately thirty days, any student who has missed three days of school has already met this criteria. The impact of just a couple absences adds up very quickly. Our goal is to target students who are beginning to trend chronic in order to avoid a pattern of non-attendance beginning. The data shows that we had a percentage of students who missed at least two days of school within the first twenty days of school, and it is likely without intervention, the percentage will rise as the year goes on. When you look at daily attendance, however, the percentages are higher because the groups of students deemed as chronically absent are not always absent on the same days. On this slide, we're presenting some school-specific data. This data comes from a school that was holding attendance response committee meetings on a regular basis last year. The data was pulled in June for their end-of-year attendance response review meeting. Of note is the following. The percentage of chronically absent students was reduced from fifty-two percent to fifty percent. The percentage of students showing no absence issues was trending up from the previous year, and the percentage of students identified as nearly trending chronic was reduced by at least one percentage point. Here, we wanted to highlight some of the goals and initiatives for the current year with regard to attendance. We kicked off our attendance campaign this month. The campaign is a year-long initiative to encourage consistent attendance and increase community and family awareness regarding the short and long-term impacts of absenteeism. We are establishing an attendance council to involve community, since we all play a role and want to make sure everyone is involved, and we want to garner support for the campaign. This council will discuss the community impact of absenteeism and brainstorm community involvement with support and interventions. The first council meeting is scheduled for later this month, at which time we will determine the scope of work and frequency of the meetings. We are working to focus on more data, on more data focus this year. For example, collecting data regarding barriers to school attendance and tracking that to look for trends, ensuring consistency with the data that we analyze, using the tools in our data dashboard, updating forms to document meetings and practices, improving the consistency with communication and follow-up with our families, and ensuring data is documented on C S T and case staffing forms to be used at truancy petitions. We are also embarking on a review and an update of our practices to continue to improve what we do and how we do it. This includes having discussions about effective teaming, pertinent documentation, follow-up and feedback, and tracking student data. We're asking staff to highlight school initiatives to include data so that we can see and share the impact of the campaign across the district. We will be tracking the percentage of chronic and trending chronic groups of students at the district and school levels, and staff will be documenting reasons and barriers to attendance. This information will be shared with school teams and the attendance council as appropriate to help problem-solve any identified trends and barriers that may be beyond the scope of what the schools can address.
Goal to update, strategy to see, is to ensure school safety is a top priority at all schools. And this is evident in the fact that we, the Safe Schools Department, has been allocated more funding to support school hardening measures. Oftentimes, that is not always not enough, but again, thanks to the generosity of an anonymous donor, we have began the process of installing a shatter-resistant three M film on our entryway windows at schools throughout the district. This school safety measure was highly considered after a school shooting in Tennessee where a subject shot out the glass door and gained entry into the school. Currently, we are on pace to complete our initial seventeen schools within the next month or so. This is a resistant, shatter-proof film that will allow law enforcement officers time to respond to an incident in the event of an active assailant. Fencing projects are near completion, and Safe Schools staff is reviewing all schools for necessary fencing and upgrades. As we've always stated, this will be an ongoing project and will never be, it will never end as we have to continue to maintain, improve the fences and conduct maintenance on them. Cameras and door buzzer projects have been accelerated to ensure completion way in advance of the original goal of twenty-twenty-six. These are our three most visible projects, along with the presence of S R Os on every school campus. And yet, on the next page, as you can see, as we chart our progress, you can see that we are near completion of our fences, door buzzers, and cameras. M C P S is also partnering with Marion County Public Schools Safety Communications to utilize the eight-hundred megahertz radio network. This will greatly improve vital communications for schools and district offices such as transportation. All school buses will be equipped with a mobile radio that will allow direct contact of information and communications to nine-one-one operators as well as first responders dispatched in an emergency. This is a rapidly moving project where we will look forward to getting these radios installed in our school buses rather quickly. This will also allow Safe Schools staff to listen and monitor the radio and respond in the event of an active assailant on one of our school campuses. Some of the things that we are doing to increase communication is to have school safety and security quarterly meetings are held with multiple districts and community stakeholders to determine best practices to improve safety and security within our schools. Safe Schools has attended and will continue to attend multiple community events to help bring awareness to youth about the potential dangers associated with gun violence. We recently attended the school's community teen gun violence, which was a great success with over a hundred and fifty kids attending. With the addition of the sworn status, the Safe Schools staff can now respond to and assist in critical situations throughout the district, as well as facilitate inter-agency information sharing to improve communication and response to threats of violence. The new Florida Harm Prevention and Threat Management Model uses a methodology that identifies students exhibiting threatening or other concerning behavior, gathers information to assess the risk of harm to themselves or others, and identifies appropriate interventions to prevent violence and promote successful outcomes. This is our newest mandate, and knowing that mental health plays a critical part in the educational growth of our students, this mandate has been placed in this new position under the Safe Schools Department. We have an ongoing commitment to improve school safety by assuring and attending meetings with our local vendors, to review their products. As this is an ongoing, this is ongoing as we continue to try to improve school safety throughout the district. We also have combined training with the Marion County Sheriff's Office and Ocala Police Department with our guardians, as well as our school safety officers, to ensure that they all are able to respond in a timely manner in the event of an emergency.
I'm back. Here we have a few examples of how mental health and wellness supports students and employees' well-being. In twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, we provided onsite training and coaching for school-based multidisciplinary teams at fifty-two schools, oops, at fifty-two schools across the district. That effort continues each year. Our team does a great job supporting school teams with refreshers, training for new team members, and needs-based problem-solving. We held a district-wide training for school-based M D Ts in July twenty-twenty-three and had over two-hundred-and-twenty participants, likely our largest turnout. We were happy to see many administrators, as well as our law enforcement partners, turn out in full force. We currently have nine Save Promise Clubs across the district that are active. With regard to mental health services, we had eighteen contracted mental health counselors who provided onsite services at thirty-four schools last year, and these services have continued this year. Additionally, our psychological and social work services staff also support counseling on campus. One of our strategic plan goals is to measure student and employee perception of social and emotional well-being, and that was to establish a climate survey to be able to measure that. Our first student survey was conducted in May twenty-twenty-three, and I'll present that data shortly. Our employee survey has been created for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and will likely be conducted in the near future, as is with our parent survey that's also coming soon. Next up, we have our SHINE Initiative. SHINE, which stands for Self-Care, Healthy Mindset, Inspire Growth, Nutrition, and Exercise, is designed to foster healthy habits and wellness geared towards our staff. We distributed ten newsletters, one per month, to all district staff. The SHINE Scope and Sequins is embedded in the Resiliency Tier One Resource Guide available on our portal, and we try to align those activities to the monthly themes, such as our Resiliency monthly themes as well. Departments are encouraged to meet monthly to continue to develop and implement different SHINE activities for their staff district-wide. Perception data will be gleaned from the employee survey results this fall. Here we have some data that we've collected and reviewed. We saw an increase in the number of M D T referrals from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two, which we attribute to the familiarity and consistency with the mental health plan framework and the process. The coaching and support provided to school teams has helped schools improve their systems, helping to identify student needs more quickly and accurately. As a result, we saw thirty-three percent increase in the referrals from the twenty-one, twenty-two to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Additionally, we documented one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-eight school interventions were recommended and provided, and three-hundred-and-sixty-six students were referred for community-based supports. These charts show some of the student climate survey results. Students accessed the survey via an icon on their desktop in May twenty-twenty-three. The surveys consisted of ten statements, such as, "My teachers want me to do well." "Students behave so teachers can teach." "My school has clear rules for behavior." "If there's an emergency at school, I know what to do." The students rated each statement on a Likert scale as always, often, sometimes, or never. Specific to this statement on the slide, which reads, "I feel safe and comfortable at school," seventy-two percent of elementary students completed the survey and indicated that they felt safe and comfortable at school always or often, and fifty percent of secondary students responded similarly. It is important to note that we had three-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-five respondents complete the elementary survey and five-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-nine students complete the secondary survey. We're going to repeat this survey and will work to encourage higher participation. We wanted to highlight one of our SHINE activities conducted last year as well. Our SHINE Mental Wellness Challenge was held in May twenty-twenty-three. We shared a calendar with daily challenges encouraging staff to engage in activities that foster mental wellness. The activities included give a compliment, do a random act of kindness, send a thank-you note, engage in deep breathing exercises, acknowledge one good thing that happened today, or send a meme to a friend. Employees who accepted the challenge were asked to complete a short reflective survey about their experience, and daily drawings were then held. We had a total of nine-hundred-and-twenty-five submissions throughout the month, and we distributed four-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars' worth of prizes. We were fortunate enough to partner with the Public Education Foundation, receiving a mini-grant from a church donation wanting to support our SHINE initiative for employees. Concluding on a positive and inspiring note, here we share some staff quotes from the Wellness Challenge activity. These are examples of the responses we received in the reflection surveys. Our goal was to encourage staff to continue to engage in these types of activities, fostering positivity and wellness and modeling these habits for our students.
Thank you, team, for the presentation. And board, you can see there, this is multifaceted, right? We're talking about safe and positive environments. We're talking about not just the, excuse me, physical safety, but mental health and wellness. And I'm just incredibly appreciative of all of our team in the field that works together to make sure that we're providing those environments. I want to highlight a few things if I could, and then we're happy to take your feedback and answer any questions. Talked a bit about attendance again. We've talked about chronically absent and that ten percent marker, but I want to restate something that was mentioned previously. The Economic Policy Institute is very clear, they've done a study, and even with one day missed, it has an impact on student achievement. At the point you get to three days or more, there's a decline, there's a sharp decline. So I just want to underscore, it's not just about chronically absent. Every day matters, every day matters. And so I want to also commend the work and our partnership. We appreciate the diversion program, but I also want to mention, and I'm just going to call this out, the data that we show in terms of our markers and our goals for reducing the number of alternative placements, expulsions, all of those, we are very transparent in our data. We have high expectations for our students, support an environment that's conducive for learning for all students, not just for that student, but for all students. And so we are very open about our data, high accountability, and we don't apologize for that. So I just want to be really clear that we want to have a safe environment for all students to learn, and that's our responsibility. The other is with regard to safety and our recent oath of office for not only Mr. McFadden, but members of his team and board. As you know, the board took action. We made a recommendation that for those members of the Safe Schools team that had the credentials that they become sworn officers as part of that Safe School team, that is because we have folks in our schools and on our campuses that needed the resources to be able to provide a safe environment. We have no intention, and Mr. McFadden and I have talked about this many times, I've had a personal conversation with the sheriff, no intention of expanding that into some big department and taking this on without our sheriff's office and our police departments. And so we've had those conversations, but we needed our team members to be equipped to provide a support, a safe environment for our staff and our students. So appreciate all the work that everyone's doing, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. I know there were notes being taken up here quite a bit, so I'm not sure who wants to begin. Reverend Cummings, do you have any notes? Would you like to start us out?
Okay, then I'll move on. Ms. Conrad.
I'll start. Most of mine are comments, and I have a few clarifications because that was a lot of information. So I think my clarifying questions are that I just missed the first part of what you shared with us. I was on at the beginning, Dr. Hembrook, slide five. I've got to get there also. I was wondering, and I couldn't, I'm not sure, was this just for the deans? The deans are working together and then coming back for the discipline team, and they're coming back and training teachers, and what does that look like?
So I think this is slide five. I think I need to maybe get an eye exam. I can't see if that, is this the slide here?
Yes, that's what I have pulled up.
So it happens at the student discipline deans meetings every month. We invite A P Ds to come as well. Sometimes they can, sometimes they can't, depends on how many people are off campus.
Okay, and so then they get that training once a month, and they go back to school, and they work with the staff there?
Yes, so last January, we took the deans, the student service managers, through the coaching cycle to help them learn what that process looked like. And then they were supposed to go back to their school site, and they were to take and they were to take one teacher through that coaching cycle as well as a bus driver. And so then that work is continuing this year.
Okay, and I just, I wanted to get clarification because I feel it's so important right now as we have so many people coming into education that don't have a background in education. And so I personally have found that that component of discipline and positive reinforcement is really a piece that gets left out for new teachers that are not in education. So I'm thankful that we've got that in place. So thank you for your work in that. A praise, just you shared that there's a class for the code of conduct. And a PowerPoint, I was really excited. That was discussed at some point by the Board, just because there's so much information to get out to our teachers and our students. So really excited. Thank you and your team for your work on that. And then slide 10. No, that's not right. Okay, I just had a question. I don't think I've got the right slide here. But for PBIS, you know, when I visit schools, there's a lot of work that our schools are doing to support, especially, you know, all of the positive interactions throughout the day and encouraging our students to be positive each day. Is there any funding attached to that? I know that a lot of times there's prizes and things that, you know, pizza party or, and I know that they also do things that don't cost, you know, like wear crazy socks and, you know, all those things. So I just wondered if there was any funding attached to that.
Are you asking about funding at school sites?
Yes, for PBIS.
So I would have to research that and get back to you. And I think every school does it differently. So they might have business partners or PTAs donate items that students can use, you know, if they trade in their point systems or bucks. But I'd have to research that for you and get back with you.
That would be great. Thank you. I think next I've got Ms. Hughes is up. She was next. I was trying to, y'all were trading, trying to keep up with who was talking about what. This piece, Ms. Hughes, I'm just, you don't have to get up. I just, I'm super excited at what's going on in this community piece. And so I just think our families are so fortunate that you all have organized and put together all of these resources. And so I hope to be able to participate, you know, and see as this moves forward. I'm just really excited, and the presentation was beautiful. And if you're listening online, I just, I wanted to bring attention to it because it's so much work. So much work goes into that, and I really appreciate it. And I was super excited about, see if I've got the right slide here. Looking at Fort Muscley School and their 35 families that attended, being a primary teacher for a long, long time, super excited to see that 100% of the families that attended increased their proficiency on those sight words. And we're looking at all of these, you know, trying to beat third grade retention. And here we've got our students, I'm assuming in kindergarten or first grade, mastering their sight words. And I just, I want to celebrate with you on that because it's just so exciting, and it's not an easy task. You know, the school has bought into the teacher and the parent, and what a team and what a difference they're making in those student lives. So thank you so much for that work. That's very exciting. Let's see, reading my notes here. Okay, next is it, the next comments I have are on attendance. And really, just to comment also is when I visit schools, and I know my fellow Board members experience this too, everybody's working so hard, especially our administrators and getting the students to school. And just, we're all here and we're talking numbers, and we want it, we want it to improve, of course. But I just, I want to acknowledge that I know everybody's working really hard to celebrate our students getting to school each day and encourage them. And I also wanted to make note that this doesn't include our tardies. And I know that's a big issue that we're struggling with too. And this Board member particularly is interested in including some of that data in here, just because it is something I feel we need to try to make strides to improve on getting our students to school on time. As an elementary teacher, we know that that beginning block, you know, that first 90 minutes, most of us are teaching reading. And so our kids that are showing up late are missing that reading instruction, you know, every morning. So that's just something that's important to me that I would like to see included in this data so we can track and strive to do better. I'm sorry that I'm a little slow here. I have so many notes, and I was writing fast. Super excited and thankful also for Safe Schools for the 3M donation, the film that's going to be added. I think that's excited, and also a celebration that we're moving ahead, and we're ahead of schedule on some of these items. It's not very often in education that we're ahead of schedule. So I just want, Mr. McFadden, thank you for that and your work in our Safe Schools. And just looking at the whole program and thinking about how the work that you're doing there and how it impacts how our students and our teachers feel as they go through, you know, their surveys and how they feel about being safe at school. I did have a question about that. The, that's an online survey for the safety? And we had, you had how many participants? I know it's in here, and I'm sorry I didn't write that down.
No, that's okay. I just have to find my page. It was three, over 3,000 for elementary students and over 5,000 for secondary.
Okay, are they able to do that in class or they encouraged to do it at home?
It was in May, they were doing it, I think they were doing it in class because we were providing, we put something in the learning line, and we were letting principals know to have teachers encourage students to jump on in their desktop whenever they're going to do either IXL, they're going to work on their Chromebook, hit the icon for the survey and complete the survey.
Okay, I like that, and I, you know, I was thinking about how we administer the best, the teachers go through and do that. And so I was thinking, if this data is that important to us, we should have, you know, an assigned amount of time. I can't imagine that it would take terribly long.
Ten questions.
Six, 10 questions, you know, that we could have staff and students go through so we can get a more comprehensive data on that. So thank you. That was just my question on that. And I think, I think that's all I have. Again, I just want to say thank you to all of you that are here this morning and that you presented really super exciting, and it makes me feel proud for the work that's being done in Marion County and helping us move forward. So thank you again for the work that you do every day. I know you're presenting to us today, but I know that, you know, you're tackling these problems each and every day. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Dr. James?
Thank you. Thank you guys all for sharing. I do have a few questions and comments. I'll start with the survey where Ms. Conrad left off. My first question is, were the survey results anonymous?
Yes, so the students put in some demographic information, but they were anonymous.
So my concern is that 15% of secondary students said they never feel safe at school, and we have no idea who those students are. And so I would ask that we figure out how to, make it less anonymous, or I don't know. But if a student is proclaiming in a survey that they never feel safe at school, we need to know who those students are because there's clearly a threat in their life and in their school setting that makes them feel uncomfortable every single day. And so I can respect the anonymousness of a survey, but I would also offer that I don't know that the students need this survey to be anonymous. I don't know what about the questions would impact their educational journey other than to provide support if they need it. But we can't provide supports if we don't know who they are. So if we can make the survey have identifying factors, that would be important for me because I feel like we're missing a group of kids here.
And I'll check on that because I don't remember if student number was something that they put in there. So I'll make sure. I think it was anonymous, and I think that's something that we did discuss when we were creating it as whether it would mean they would participate more often if it was anonymous. But I'll go back and I'll check for sure.
So my other comment that I received from principals was, and I can acknowledge that this was something we were trying to accomplish before the end of the school year last year, but it was a little hasty. And so as we go out and have a little bit more forward planning this year with delivering the survey, my question or recommendation is going to be that specifically for K-2, there is modifications provided for children that can't read. Because while it was asked of teachers to give this one-on-one, that any K-2 teacher who has had to sit one-on-one and read questions to a student or a group of students understands that that's an incredibly cumbersome task that requires a lot of time. But if we want to get valuable results, I think that it's important that we build out and make it, make it as feasible as possible. But also looking at a survey for K-2, maybe not having always, often, sometimes, and never, but having three happy faces that are red, yellow, and green. Because I think that having a survey that is more appropriate for the learner that's taking it would get us data that's, that's, you know, a kindergartner doesn't know always, often, sometimes, and never, generally speaking. And so the data that we collected from kindergarteners is probably not very accurate if we were able to collect it at all. So those would be my recommendations, is that we make a more age-appropriate survey for K-2 and that we try and find some identifying factors so that the data, I mean, I'm sure Mr. McFadden's department would cherish knowing which students never feel safe at school because that's how we could then adjust what we're doing to meet them where they are. I know that there had been conversation about a survey with regard to the superintendent and executive cabinet that would go out to families and community members. Where are we, and I think that was tied to maybe accreditation. Do we, can we update on that since we're talking surveys?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I was going to comment when Ms. Conrad brought up surveys. So yes, actually, Cognia, because we're doing the district-wide accreditation, they're finishing their walks now, and we anticipate having a recommendation by the beginning of October.
Okay.
That's part of the, that's part of the district accreditation process that they do.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think that concludes my remarks on surveys. I do, hold on. So when we discussed truancy, rolling 90 days, that feels like that was just yesterday, but I think that was probably at least two weeks ago now. Have we gotten anywhere in identifying procedurally adjusting how we're tackling that?
So adjusting, not so much. But I did have some conversations. I think because of the way that the state statute reads, everyone still reads it as the calendar days. But one point that I should have made or was clarified when we had these discussions was even if you're not following that, counting those days within those 30 calendar days or 90 calendar days, we really only have one CST meeting for a student in one year. We don't start it whole brand new like clean slate the following year. Does that make sense? So if we had a CST meeting this year, year ended. Next year starts, yes, those calendar dates start fresh, but that's history of attendance. So if they start to accrue absences again, it's not like we're saying, well, we only had one CST last year. We got to start that process all over again. We continue that process. There's documentation that a CST was hacked, and so they continue the next step of the process rather than beginning anew, if that makes sense.
Yes, so to clarify, if a school site has a CST in October of 2022 for a student, so a student had already accumulated the absences and gets to the point of a CST, and they have it in the second quarter, I'll just say the second quarter, some point between October and December of 2022, that child does get to start fresh because essentially there are almost 90 days in the summer break. So on August 10th, that child starts fresh. But by September 21st, we do have some students who have already accumulated 10 days already this school year. So what is that school's next step? Do they go immediately to case staffing?
I think it depends. It's a case-by-case basis because we want to know what happened. In the period of time before the new school year started, did attendance improve? And so now it's declining again, and is that a new conversation? If it hasn't, and it's just kind of been a trend that's happening, then case staffing would be the next step. So at that point, we're going to move that to case staffing to bring in more partners to that conversation, to have more problem solving as to what exactly are the barriers and why whatever we were trying was not being as effective as we would want it to be, and then have additional monitoring.
So to confirm, if I am, if I am a school site leader who wants to refer a child to case staffing today, September 21st, if they have had a CST within one calendar year of September 21st, and their trends in their attendance never really improved, or we had some ebbs and some flows, but generally speaking are below standard, they can refer to case staffing?
That is an option, yes.
What are the other options?
As I said, it depends on what the cases are. If they want to have another meeting with the parent to try to make some tweaks to those interventions, and they want to, it's a school-based decision.
So what I'm struggling with is that I think that there is still very much, we're not all on the same page. And so I have principals, I'm going to an attendance meeting again tomorrow at the same school that holds attendance meetings every single month. And they got zero students to truancy court last year, and they have the worst attendance in the district, and they try so hard to improve attendance. And it feels like there is an absence of support or a miscommunication about what the standards are. Because they have, they had a plethora of CSTs. So they should be able to be sending kids straight to case staffing. These same families have had the same absence, truancy, consistent trends for years. And so I just think there needs to be some level of procedural memorandum that is created and outlined so there is no confusion as to what the expectation is, like a decision tree. If the child is this, then this. But I think that there is, I don't think, I know there is a genuine level of misrepresentation or confusion about what next steps are, and I don't want schools to miss their window because if they did have a CST in the fall of last year and the child is having the same trends right now and has hit the 10 days, I want that school to be able to get to case staffing before their year elapses, and then they have to go through the CST whole model again.
And let me, let me speak to this because this is an important distinction. There is a substantial difference between chronic absenteeism and habitual truancy in Florida statute. Chronic absentee, chronic absenteeism, as we're defining it here, may be useful for monitoring trends and responding to attendance trends, things like that. CST, same thing. When it comes, however, to truancy, there is a snapshot of a 90-day window. That 90-day window, if there are 15 absences that are unexcused within that 15-day window, oh, sorry, within that 90-day window, that's your ticket into potential truancy court. And that then would be referred, we would then file a petition. The petition requires that there is a snapshot of 15 unexcused absences within a 90-day period. Now, for other actions we might take from an administrative side, that's completely separate. So that also does, that means that after 90 days, if the student has perfect attendance after that, there's, it doesn't matter. We still can pursue it through truancy court and get a petition filed and get the parents, you know, brought into court to address. But as far as the chronic absenteeism, the court doesn't make any distinction. The statute doesn't make any distinction. We call it chronic absenteeism if there's, if the student misses the first, two days within the first month of school because of the fact, unexcused, because of the fact that two days out of a 20, 21-day actual school days is 10%. That means nothing to truancy court.
No, I, I fully understand the distinction. I believe and know wholeheartedly there are students who have 15 days out in a 90-day period already this school year, but absolutely had it last school year. They've had a CST in one calendar year from today, and so I'm just looking for very clear guidance to our school leaders as to what their next steps can be. That's all.
And so I'll say that as part of this, when I said we're reviewing our procedures and our practices, and we're trying to sheer that up a little bit, that's what we're working on now, whether it's a, you know, one-page kind of guidance or a flow chart. Those are the kinds of things that we're looking at to make sure everybody understands the definitions, everybody understands the procedures, and we're all following it the same way.
And I am attending that attendance meeting tomorrow, so I just want to make sure that when I go to the, I always try and be as active a participant. that when I go to the, I always try and be as active a participant and helpful as possible. So I want to be able to share appropriate information tomorrow to them as they talk about some of these high-flying students who have already met this requirement and have already had a CST. So they may very well be ready to be referred to case staffing so that they can continue to work through the chain of command, I guess.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt?
Yes, Dr. Collier.
So for clarity, I think this is an important conversation. What guidance is provided to schools currently in terms of this topic so that, because it does tend to be the same students and there tend to be patterns. So what's the current guidance provided to schools?
We do have our attendance manual that lays it all out, and the guidance is they are monitoring the attendance. The CST meetings happen first, and that's within a certain amount of absent, unexcused absences following that, if that trend continues, and they have the case staffing. The case staffing is not truancy yet. It is yet another meeting where we're inviting the community in, and we're still problem-solving and trying to improve the attendance.
So does a school have the authority to say, we've done all this work, we've had these meetings, we need this to move forward?
We'd like to move it to case staffing.
How many, I know you may not know off the top of your head, generally speaking, how many schools have indicated that to the team that need to go forward?
We, I would say most of the schools. Like, we doubled our meetings last year, so it's really hard to schedule those with everybody in the community, so it's not like we have them every week. But we did double those meetings, we were offering them at least twice a month. And that, it's not school-specific, we just set up the calendar based off of who, what families are moving forward for K two.
And they are taken forward for consideration legally?
It, after they've been monitored. So they come up with a plan at case staffing, that plan is implemented, they're monitored, and then they move forward.
Monitored after the 90 days?
Mm-hmm.
For how long?
Correct.
How long?
Uh, it depends. I don't think there's an actual.
And so that is, that is where, and I, I feel like I'm just speaking on behalf of very frustrated principals right now, but that is the problem, is it feels like they can never get to truancy, and these same families are getting basically slaps on the wrist every single year. Because if there is a kid who already had a CST last year, that would be acknowledgement that this is a trend in their attendance. If they've already missed 10 days or 15 days this school year, why are we doing, why do we even have to go to the case staffing for further monitoring? Why can't we just refer to truancy? I, I just don't understand why we have to provide so much leverage for consideration to families who have consistent trends in their attendance.
And I think, I, I need to respond to that also because I think what you're saying is very important. What we've got, what the perception is perhaps within a school, and I don't, I don't know this for, for any particular school, but if a student misses five days, which is an entire week of school in, in, in September, and then five days again in October, and then in November misses four days, and then, of course, is going to miss two days of Thanksgiving, and has 27 unexcused absences, I'm sorry, 27 unexcused tardies in addition to those, would that be a student we want to refer for truancy? Yes. However, we can't. He missed 14 days within a 90-day window. So that's.
But if he missed a day in December, it is a roll, that is a rolling 90-day.
No. The 90-day period, the 90-day period, it's within one 90-day period. So within 90 calendar days.
There is a 90-day defined.
Florida statute.
What, as what dates?
Calendar.
90-day calendar period.
Okay, so, but what I'm asking is August 2nd to November 2nd is 90 days. I mean, it could be 89, but you know, you know where I'm going. So.
They have to then have missed, within a 90-day calendar window, they have to have missed 15 days.
Yes, but during the school year, that is rolling. I acknowledge that from May to August, there are 90 days, so the school year from year to year is not rolling. But if you missed a day in December, it's still a rolling from August 10th.
I don't know what you mean by rolling, but here, let, let me, let me define it this way. Let's say they have perfect attendance the first week of school. So from August 10th to August 20th, then from August 20th to November 20th, they missed 14 days, which is a week of each one of those, then that is, is, is a 90-day period, and they've missed 15 days. If they missed 14 days, that's not truancy, not habitual truancy by statute.
But from August 22nd to November 22nd, if they pick up, or from, from, you know, September 1st to December 1st, if they pick up two more days and the days wind up accruing to 15, we've now hit the 15 days.
If it occur, if, if, if.
In 90 calendar days.
An absence will drop off essentially after it's more than 90 days old.
Yes, rolling. So the 90 days continues to roll throughout the entire school year. I understand there's a hard stop because of the school year ending and the summer elapsing a 90-day window, but the 90 days doesn't just blow up at the end of the first nine weeks. We continue to gain absences. So if you're a family who wants to take off all of Thanksgiving break when we only have two days for Thanksgiving break, as an example, then those three days are going to count towards your accumulated absences. And if you hit that 90 days, we should be triggering truancy. We, I don't know why we have to go to case monitoring or case staffing and have a whole nother period of undefined time to try and fix a problem that we know is consistently existing. That is what I'm trying to get at, I just don't understand.
If I may, I, I, you, you referenced on, excuse me, slide 18, I believe, the attendance council, that's coming up in the next few weeks. Are principals going to be on that?
We have a principal we've invited, yes.
Okay, I would suggest several. I would suggest principals from each level, at least one, if not more. And if you could walk away from that with an articulated plan to address this, I think a flow chart would be very helpful. That would be, I think, this is an important conversation, and I do think there needs to be some clarity. And we do have to consider the legal ramifications, but we also have to consider what we can do to make sure that this is a priority.
And the other, the other portion of that that can be frustrating when I, when, when we're appearing in court on these issues is that, in, in many cases, these are truly habitual truant students. Those, that, it's not a problem finding 15 days within a 90-day window. The problem occasionally occurs where you have a student who is at that 10, 12, 13 days within 90 days, but those, remember, that's defined only by unexcused absences. So they may have 12 or 13 or 14 unexcused absences, and they have five additional excused absences, or ones that we're waiting on, has a doctor's note been given, or, or was it just a, was the absence too long? Because after a certain period of time, they also, a stu, a parent may have a legitimate, I had to keep my student out for X number of days, but they require a doctor's note if you do. So also, so the school could very well say, look, this student has been unexcused absent for 14 days in the last 90. In addition, five excused absences. In addition, every single day has had an unexcused tardy or an early checkout. That student is one that we would definitely, would like to be able to pursue forward in, in truancy court, but that's, that's one that clearly does not meet the statute. So it might be a communication issue to make sure schools know what is required for truancy, and if there are students that exist who are meeting those, then we certainly need to, to put those into petitions. However, there are also, I, I can speak from experience, there are a great number of students who do not meet that, though we identify them not only as chronically absent, but simply not being in school nearly enough to learn because of the fact that whether it's excused or unexcused, and there's tardies and early checkouts, I have to meet statutory criteria for those. So, you know, our, but my point is that our attendance criteria and, and our ways that we address them as, from a, from a district and from a school perspective, although it's independent of truancy court, it's also something that truancy court doesn't define, that we can't do a number of things within our administrative processes to help encourage and improve attendance and, and network, work with families, do CST staffings, do whatever else we need to do. But there's no requirement that there necessarily be a CST staffing for us to refer a case for truancy. It just requires that we have attendance data, but the attendance data also must be accurate. It is not, and, and when I say must be accurate, one of the things that, that I frequently get in, in, in truancy petitions is all this list of their unexcused tardies. While that might be helpful in explaining to the judge, this demonstrates a pattern, it is of no legal significance for the ability for me to, to outline that. Likewise, students may attend a class in high school, for example, and be marked, they, they may show up late, so they're marked absent from class, but that's not absent for the school day. So they have to miss unexcused days, so not just classes. So it, it, our, the criteria legally, very clear. It's very, that's, that's easy stuff. The problem is that a lot of students will be chronically absentee and chronically having problems with attendance that don't meet the criteria either.
Okay, I think that, that buttons it up for that, for me. I do have one more question, though, not for you, though. You're, you get off the hot seat. So I have just, I'm looking for a follow-up on, we created an alternative site here at Marion MTI, and I think, not I think, I should stop saying that. I know that it looks, maybe it's looking a little different than how the board received information. And so my first question is, I'm looking to understand, when we were presented with creating the program, we were told it was going to be non-aggregious offenders, and then egregious offenders would continue to go to Sermi or New Leaf. I'm looking, I couldn't find back, wasn't there a chart that you created where a non-aggregious offenses and their codes were in one section, and then egregious was in another section? I believe, we all remember that. I don't know where that is, but I would like to see that because my understanding is it's now not non-aggregious, but it's nonviolent, which is not the same as non-aggregious. And so I'm looking to see what the board was presented and like, if it's still the same or if it's different. Because I think, because I got this from the discipline conversation, that's kind of what sparked it, but I, I also thought there was going to be like 80-something students and maybe there's only 50-something students right now, which obviously it's a very ebb and flow because it's, it's one of those things that is always revolving. But I think that there are people who chose to work in this particular school setting for the purposes of it being a non-aggregious site, and potentially some of the students who have been placed at MTI for an alternative placement are not necessarily falling into the definition that, that maybe we were portraying. And so I just really would love some clarification, and if it's not right now, it could be at a later date, but like an updating clarification about what it's looking like. Because I also think, you know, if a student is a student at Sermi and they are returned non-recommended to their base school, which means that they are put on a behavior contract at their base school, and they violate that behavior contract, the violation of the behavior contract is non-aggregious, but the reason that they were at Sermi was egregious. And so that child should not have an opportunity to come to MTI for alternative placement because, yes, semantically, they did do a non-aggregious offense, which was violating that behavior contract, but they should not be able to come back here, come here. They should be going back to Sermi because the initial offense that got them the behavior contract was egregious. And so there are some nuances to what, what's going on that I think I would like to get an update on because I want to ensure that we are maintaining the fidelity of what we were trying to accomplish. And, and if it has changed, then I also just want to understand what that change looks like so that we can ensure that the staff has the most appropriate supports to be successful. But I just, I think that as we're looking at, you know, because diversion was a big piece, and the absence of diversion created a lot of, a big increase last year. And anyone who's been in secondary and had those, you know, one-time drug offenders and it, diversion was a great program to be able to try and meet some students where they needed to be met. But I'm, you know, I remember in that board meeting, I asked a question about sexual offenses, and I don't, I don't know how I feel about someone who violates our code of conduct for sexual offenses being at a non, being non-aggregious and being with students who brought a THC vape to school one time. I just don't know that those are the, the same offenses being in the same place. So.
Your, the timing of your question is perfect. Yesterday, we met, student discipline department met with those that had spearheaded the, the idea of the alternative program at MTI as well as some leaders from the alternative program at MTI. So we had some, a good conversation yesterday to clarify that criteria. And so the next step is for me to go back to that team and just maybe, just make sure we have solidified and agreed upon it, and then I'll be reaching out to board members to share that. So thank you. And thank you for talking about the chart because I've not seen that, so I want to make sure I find that as well.
Before you leave, so is the mission of this school changing?
No.
I mean, so, because we didn't, that's not what we talked about.
May I answer that?
Dr. Collier.
I can tell you, no. I mean, we, we talked, that chart was very clear, it's non-aggregious. And I will describe this to your questions, Reverend Cummings and Dr. James. Think about it in terms of progressive discipline, right? If, if someone comes for a non-aggregious behavior, but they violate that, this opportunity is no longer an opportunity, right? That, that is my expectation. So I, I was made aware recently of a case by one of you and, and asked the team about it because there's a specific place and purpose that we establish this. And for it to work with fidelity, we have to make sure we maintain that. I had some conversation with Ms. Talbert Irving, and she was looking into that because we have to be true to that. That is the whole example back in the beginning with having students with different behaviors side by side that I was not comfortable with as a superintendent. So we already were looking into one case and are making sure to track those. The numbers have been reduced. I know I've recently walked with Mr. Jones and the team, and some of those students have graduated, and as those students come in, it's early in the year, they will come here, but it needs to be pure about the non-aggregious.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Superintendent.
Sorry, but, yes.
I asked that question, I think you and I talked about this the other day.
Yes.
So when a kid is at this, given the privilege to come here, and then they do something else, are we using progressive discipline with that? Are we giving them, extending them? Are we sending them back? What are we, what are we doing? Because if they come here and do the same thing, then this, there's no incentive to bring a kid here.
That's correct. That, that's correct. And it would, it would invalidate the conditions we're trying to, to have here. Without getting to specifics and cases, absolutely. And, and that doesn't, that's not going to work, and so that's why it needs to go to your, your other option as one of these other centers.
I, I know that one of the things that we talked about as a board, that we didn't want this to be like a dumping ground for kids, that they would just get shipped here and, and get stuck in locks on the road, so.
Correct.
We want to be true to the fidelity of what we stated it was going to be.
Correct, and I, I do think we've wavered a little bit, so tightening it back up would be important. But I also think it's important to acknowledge, as Superintendent just said, as a progressive discipline district, the absence of acknowledging previous discipline history is not, is not representative of progressive discipline. So just because the singular offense that landed me here today was non-aggregious, in the absence of acknowledging that my prior discipline history was egregious, is not what the teachers at this particular site signed up for. Because that, what that means is that you could have someone who has egregious history, has been to Sermi or New Leaf potentially, was back at their base school and had a non-aggregious offense, which credits them the opportunity to be alternatively placed here, that is completely not acknowledging that they have an egregious history. And as a progressive discipline district, I believe that in, in looking at their opportunity for placement, for alternative placement, we should be reviewing their entire discipline history and not just taking a singular, a singular action for placement at alternative, at an alternative site, but rather looking at the student as a whole. Because we do have some students currently placed at MTI with egregious backgrounds who did a non-aggregious offense to get them here. And, and that is not, I believe, what the intention was. And so I just, I just have some concerns about that, and I think it's important we button that up and try and figure out exactly what the intention there was. Because, you know, and, and to Ms. Thorough's point, because she was the one who was adamant about ESE, there is an ESE student who is potentially getting placed, who is VE. Well, we don't have a VE setting at MTI.
Oh.
So. So are we changing that student's placement? Are we adding a unit to create a V E classroom? Are we, because otherwise, we do not have that option available here. And so, and we just, I don't know, I just think we need to really look into it. So that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Dr. James. I'm not sure if Ms. Thrower is on the phone with us. Is she, Ms. Thrower, are you on the phone? Would you like to have any commentary if you are there?
Yes, and I'm not sure if Board Member Cummings has comments that he wants to make first. If so, I'm fine with that. Otherwise, I'm happy to share.
Why don't you go ahead and then we'll let Reverend Cummings follow after you.
Okay, great. First of all, I just wanted to thank everyone for the presentation today. And as I reflected during the other board member comments so far, it just becomes more and more clear to me that being proactive and taking the bull by the horns and acknowledging the elephant in the room is going to save us a lot of time moving forward. I love the fact that there's systems being put into place to address these longstanding issues. I think that that's going to really help reduce them. The issues start at home and go all the way up through the top of our court system. So it's a tough beast to tame, but I am hearing that we're putting the attention and the dedication into doing that, which is really important because as a school board member, you know, I look at the fiscal responsibility that we have, and we are spending so much money trying to just get and keep kids in school when that's basic, in my opinion. And I think that once we begin to really blow the horn, and I mean that in a good way, I think that perhaps even the whole community doesn't quite understand yet how wonderful and attainable a great education is in Marion County public schools. And that can be to graduate from college before you walk across and get your diploma for high school. It can be those industry certifications, you know, whatever it takes to be making that happen is costing us hundreds of millions of dollars. So we have got to prioritize and finally really wrangle this beast of attendance. And I understand that we'll probably be getting a new truancy judge, so there's going to be, need to be continued relationship building there. The rocket docket doesn't cut it. I want to be frank about that. You know, we need truancy prioritized until it's not a problem anymore. Because the cost to our community is proving day by day to just be already too high and and increasing. There's a lot more I could say, it's just difficult to do by phone. I didn't hear all of the comments super well, but I think I got the gist of most of them. I'm proud of this board for prioritizing in our legislative priorities how important attendance, attendance is. Really looking at lowering the compulsory age of attendance, maybe finally recognizing educational neglect in the state of Florida. You know, there's just a lot that we're working on and a lot that I know that we can do. Because the reality is, after sitting and listening to all the commentary, it's, to me, there's just no other clear indefinite choice than to just make sure that it's a priority in our community for kids to get up, show up, and do that regularly. That's all I have. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Vice Chair Thrower, Reverend Cummings.
And thank you, Madam Chair, for coming back to me. I gave him this opportunity. I do want to thank the team for this very important update, I would say. We talked about the safe schools and the positive learning environment. My colleagues have all addressed the, some of the things that I wanted to say and that I would have said. Is, is, I get a, let me see, I get a lot of calls, a lot of correspondence concerning classroom safety, students' behaviors and disciplines and all those types of things. I don't know if you guys are getting those types of calls as well. However, to know that our strategic plan is working towards resolving some of those issues is vitally important. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut my comments short. I'm just gonna say thank you for, for what you're doing. Please, let's continue to, I see the, the baseline, the targets and where we're trying to go. We have a long way to go to get to those. And I am concerned about some of the things that we talked about as far as with, with the mission of this alternative program here as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. As each board member, thank you so much for the commentary and the extensive dialogue that's already occurred today. I was taking notes along the way of just, a lot of my thoughts that I had were initially questions that have now become comments. So this is speaking individually as a board member, just some thoughts on the chronic absenteeism. So going back to slide two, and you don't have to do that, Mr. Christian, but that's where we started today. We started with looking at what our metrics are, what our baseline was, and where we're trying to go, and where we are currently. I'm very concerned about chronic absenteeism. We've talked about that quite a bit. To Dr. Gullett's point, the attendance council, I do believe, does need, this is personally, have principals on it, please draw principals from the schools with the highest chronic absenteeism. They're going to have the most experience with what that looks like and the challenges that they're having. Also wanted to note that several of those schools and several of those principals also understand that their families know the limits and they game the system. Not all, not all, but many that we have challenges with understand what the number is. They know it's 15 days before they're going to go to court. So they're going to do 14, and then they're going to wait, and they're going to watch a couple of days fall off, and then they're going to let that start happening again. Principals know that, and we need to figure out a way that we can help them, help those families. I, I don't know what that necessarily looks like, but as Vice Chair Thrower just said, we as a school board are working to have the statute changed. We talked about it last year, we're talking about it even more strongly this year. My hope is that when I go to the Florida School Board Association Legislative Platform Development, that other school boards will jump on this with us as well because we understand how important that is. Understanding, though, that we have 33% of our 45,000 student, 45,500 students that are listed as chronically absent last year is just appalling. And I, but, let me have a positive note because while we're sitting here in this work session today, we did receive our absentee daily attendance count that we get every day, we get that. So for yesterday, I want to do some positives really quick. Those schools that had greater than 96% attendance, so that's less than 4% of students that are absent from school. Want to first talk about elementary schools. Well, I'll talk Fordham, Fordham was at 96% yesterday. Great job, Fordham. Only had five unexcused absences, so that's terrific. Our elementary schools, the four elementary schools that were above 96% are going to be the four that they always are, and I'm going to speak to that just, excuse me, there are three, three, going to be the three that they always are, and I want to speak to that. Dr. N H Jones was at 96.5%. Eighth Street Elementary School was at 98.1%. And Madison Street was at 96.5%, 96.6%. What are the delineating factors of those three schools? Now, a lot of folks are going to say they're magnet schools, they, all the things, you know, they, they have great teach, whatever. We have great teachers everywhere. We have families that are sending their kids to school everywhere. But the delineating factor really of those three schools is because parents have to bring them to school. Eighth Street has such a significant number of families. Yes, they do have buses that go to Eighth Street, which delineates them from N H Jones and Madison Street because those two schools don't even have buses. Eighth Street does have bus a little bit, but significant numbers of families live within a two mile radius of Eighth Street, and those students, for the most part, are not coming to school on our transportation. This is not a, like a negative on transportation because we know more than 30,000 students in the school district are riding our buses, and they do a fabulous job. But the delineating factor right now is parents being forced to be a part of the solution. Not saying we have to reduce the number of trans, I mean, we're legally required to have transportation. I under, I understand all that. But I just want the community to understand, the schools that are highly productive in their student achievement are also those that have students that come to school because their parents are dropping them off at school. So I want to speak to that elementary school thing first. The other schools I want to point out that were higher than 96% yesterday. Forest was at 97%. Lake Weir Middle was at 97.5. That is a huge number, huge number. Potentially, they were doing testing yesterday. What was it that caused that number? I'm interested in that. And Liberty Middle School was at 96.3. So all of our other schools were under 96% just for yesterday, snapshot in time, one point in time, I understand that. But I did want to do some shout outs because we've been talking a lot about chronic absenteeism. I wanted to just point out why some students aren't chronically absent and what that looks like. I do appreciate all of the commentary from Dr. James and from Ms. Delnoldal to try to talk through some of that. But again, with 33% of our students being chronically absent, and I know we doubled our case study meetings, but still only 235 meetings out of 33% of 45,000, it's just not cutting it. So that, that's just, Allison Campbell, individual board member, we have to fix it. So, moving on from there. Alternative placements and expulsions. Recently, being a part of a group with other school districts around the state, we, I as an individual board member and those who were in attendance, found out that our expulsion number in Marion County public schools is significantly higher than the expulsion rate in other districts. Dr. Gullett spoke briefly to that by saying we are very transparent. I'm not calling out other districts to say they're not because we're not trying to do that, we're owning what our own data says. But is there any one, any way that we can speak to why our expulsion rate in Marion County public schools is so high? I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that, if we want to just kind of leave that as a dangling question, a rhetorical question. But I did speak with a member of the team who relayed to me that frankly, our illegal drug use in Marion County is higher than other districts around the state. Frankly, our, our two on one fight rate, or at least the way we classify that for expulsion purposes, is higher than some other districts. But Dr. Gullett, I don't know if you or anyone else, I, it was, it was interesting to me sitting there, and Reverend Cummings is shaking, and said he was there as well. We, we learned that other school districts, every single student that is expelled within the school district comes before the board. Every single student, because they have so few, every single student has an opportunity to talk about their expulsion before they're expelled.
For a hearing.
For a hearing. Not just those that are questioning their expulsion, but because they have so few. And I'm not talking just districts that are small districts with only a handful of schools, even very large districts, two or three times the size of Marion County. So Dr. Gullett, would you want to speak to that? I just, for transparency's sake.
Certainly, I can, thank you, Madam Chair, speak to some of that, yes. There are behaviors that we have in our code of student conduct that are not expellable offenses in many other districts. That's the first piece. And we certainly can bring the students forward, but there are, there are many of those where they just have, without getting into details, because it varies by district. You know, a weapon, a certain type of weapon, certain, when you look at drug offenses, it's not, there's different categories with, with regard to either possession or distribution, those different types of categories. So and different amounts of drugs and different types of classifications of drugs, so it goes very detailed. But to summarize, quite frankly, a lot of districts don't expel students for those behaviors. We do. And we are very upfront about taking those things very seriously, those conditions, again, for safety, but that is based on our code of student conduct. As, as, speaking about the community as a whole, like, I can't, I don't want to go there and do that without any concrete data in front of me, but certainly compared to other places, we're pretty tight. We're pretty tight on our code of student conduct. The two on one is another example. That may not be, and in many cases, it's not an expellable offense in other districts. So just part of that work that, that I know you all have been involved with, with our code of student conduct and the impact it has on the environment. But that's, that's what that's about.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. I appreciate that for sure because it's helpful for us to see from a perspective of, of how this district looks compared to others when data comes out about those kinds of things. But it also speaks very strongly to why we're here today. Goal two, about a safe and positive learning and working environment for our students. We are holding our students and our staff to very high standards when it comes, well, not even very high, but we're holding them to high standards when it comes to those offenses. And what is that going to do ultimately? Once we do start hitting those targets of reducing all placements and expulsions, it's going to raise that level of safety and, and the feeling of positive, safe environment for our students and our, and our staff. So thank you for speaking to that. When we were talking about it, it just, it triggered in my mind about that conversation that recently had with multiple school districts, and I just wanted to, to bring that up. I'm going to go through mine real quick, and then certainly if there's additional commentary from the board, we will have that at a time. I just wanted to speak really quickly to slide number 12, which is about the family focus. You don't have to get up necessarily, but thank you, Ms. Hughes, for, for your information about that. My experience last year when they had a different name, my experience last year in attending one or two of these was that the team did such an amazing job, and we're talking dozens of people from the district and the school and, that are there, that are a part of providing this amazing resource to our families. The numbers of families that are taking advantage of these events continues to lag far beyond, behind the numbers that actually need to be taking advantage of them. So I believe you did speak something to a mobile family focus vehicle of sorts. I'm super excited about what the potential of that is and what that might look like. I don't know, and so in just a moment, I'm going to talk about surveys. But I don't know if there's a way, when we produce this parent survey that's coming up and hopefully hasn't already gone out because I have a question or two about it. But when we do that, if there's a way to potentially even say, what time, what day of the week, what time of day, what even time of year would be most effective for you to attend one of these influential impactful events if you knew it was going to impact your individual student's achievement? So I, I think there's a creative way to write that question, but I also think there's a way for us to say, you know what? The Saturday after all of our away football games or a Saturday during M C Y F L or whatever, I'm just, I'm randomly coming up, probably aren't the most effective times. Or if we're trying to reach elementary school predominantly, let's make those on a Saturday in the late afternoon, or let's make them even on a Sunday. I mean, I'm just, or maybe it's a Wednesday evening or whatever. I'm just, I don't know that we as a district have actually asked the target audience, when will be the most appropriate time to provide the resource we're providing? We created it because it was a good time for us. And so I'm, I'm not, I'm speaking generally, I don't know that to be fully fact. But because it's a good time for us doesn't necessarily mean it's a good time for the folks we're trying to reach. I'm going to leave that there. I think that mobile family focus will be wonderful. We can take it on the road, pop into a neighborhood, and they won't have to leave their homes, et cetera. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. And possibly even take it on the road to community centers and various locations where families might already be as opposed to making them come to school. Okay. Slide 23, just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Gullett for addressing the status of the school district police department. I am grateful that we have achieved sworn status of the safe schools department folks, but there have been a lot of questions in the last two to three days about the status of the school police department and what of the school police department and what that is, and even the fact that it is a school police department. And so when that slide came up on 23, where it actually had the shield that said Marion School District Police Department, it just, it caused me a little bit of a pause because there's a lot of confusion right now in the community and questions about the future of what this school district is trying to do with the Safe Schools Department. And thank you, Dr. Gullett, for addressing that, but I want to reiterate, at least from my seat as a board member, the intention, as this board member sits here, is not to increase that capacity in any shape, form, or fashion. It is only to, this is again, Allison Campbell, individual board member, don't know how the rest of the board feels, but it is my intention as a board member that we will not become a full-fledged police department with police cars and all, and evidence reporting and all those things. That is not the intention of this individual board member for that department. I am completely comfortable with ensuring that the Safe Schools Department members that we currently have are able to have sworn status to be able to provide backup to the already sworn officers on our campuses should incidents occur that requires backup. I'm going to leave that there. Moving on to slide 27, the parent survey was where that was addressed. I am asking, since it potentially hasn't already gone out, I'm grateful that we're producing a parent survey. You already heard the one question that I think potentially could be added to assist us with a family focus planning, but I'm also thinking ahead. I was looking quickly at something else and noticed that last year around January, which really isn't that far away when we think about it, we received the data on the school calendar survey that went out. And I don't know if the calendar committee's already meeting, hopefully they are. My hope, individual board member speaking, is that we'll have at least two school calendars that come before us, potentially even three at one time. But while we are doing a parent survey, I think it would be highly effective if the parent survey was all-encompassing, multiple departments, questions you need asked of parents, all included in the same survey. And so that we're not having a parent survey go out about this, and then immediately, a month later, another parent survey going out about this. And so if we got together in all the departments and all the things we want to know from parents, if school calendar question is in there, other parents are going to say, hey, did you, did you answer that question? Did you? Then they're going to all go back and do the whole survey. So, just making that as a point, so they're not receiving multiple surveys, and hopefully that's going to be something going out in maybe October or so, so that. The last two things I have are comments again, and this is just a comment from a perspective of looking at a PowerPoint presentation. So, understanding that we are grateful that the team has put together such a valuable presentation for us today, but also understanding that not every community member potentially will go back and watch this two-plus-hour work session. On slide 29, we received verbally how many students participated in the survey. If that can potentially, as we do these in the future, include that, just as a little asterisk, asterisks saying, this number of high school students completed at this number of elementary school students, that just, that's on slide 29 specifically. And then I want to speak to slide 30, just to say very similar things, slide, we'll say on slide 30. We also received verbally where those dollars came from on the prizes. Again, if there's an asterisk that says, from generous donations from the Public Education Foundation or something, because if I'm just a community member looking at this as the only piece, I don't have that information. So I appreciate it certainly, for the team delivering that, but that would just be helpful moving forward. If someone were to just download this presentation, they wouldn't necessarily know those couple of keys. And the last thing, going back to slide 29, because Dr. James did bring this up about the anonymity of the surveys, so I am going to agree that if we have certain numbers of students, first of all, very solid points on the K2 survey and what that would look like very differently than potentially what a high school student surveyed, we can't have those look the same, while the data collected can be the same, we can't have them look the same, because how they're going to be able to disseminate what those words mean is very, so thank you to that point. But I also want to mention from an anonymity perspective, I think that that's powerful to say that students who may feel unsafe, we don't need to not know who they are. I think that's powerful. But I also question, so I know Ms. Delnoldal, you're going to get additional feedback for us, because you may not know that, but I'm just thinking out loud to say, from an anonymity perspective, if they are completing the survey from an icon on their computers, they are already logged in to that computer. So there probably is an IP address attached to that. Granted, we don't want to get that granular. If the student believes it's an anonymous survey, we don't need to then not let them know that we're going to be tracking the data. But anyway, I think there probably would be a way to track those just from the previous survey, but if the survey does have something in it that says your responses are anonymous, then we can't go back and look at that. But if it doesn't already say that, we may be able to track a little bit better on who, just because of the single sign-on that we have now with our computers, to know who those individuals are. So, that, I think that covers all of my comments, and I covered a whole bunch, not so many questions as much as comments. But Board, I don't know if any of you wanted to speak to anything that I said, just because I had a lot. Dr. James.
My question would just be if Mr. McFadden, Chief McFadden, could, you made a comment about having more drug offenses than our peers, our other school districts. I would argue, we're just catching more kids than other school districts are, or enforcing it more. We probably don't have more, but I would love to know, is there a way we can get with Chief Falcone and Sheriff Woods and just look at statistically, how much, how many drug offenses, you know, minor drug offenses do we have in our community in relation to how many drug offenses we're having within our school system? And just see if that data is at all correlated, or is it elevated for the K-12 population in comparison to the adult population? I would just be interested to know, because I think it's important for the transparency. If we're trying to curb a problem that is, you know, prevalent, to what you said, prevalent in our community, then we potentially are not going to be able to solve this problem within our own organization, but rather are going to need to join hands with the community to have a greater conversation about how to address a drug issue. So I just think for transparency purposes, it would be interesting to know where the local police departments are with their rates.
Thank you, Dr. James. Attorney Powers, you're leaning forward. Do you have any commentary? Okay, all right, just checking. That's Dr. Gullett's cue, usually when she leans forward, so I was just checking.
Yes. I'm thinking more, it's not a.
Okay. Terrific, terrific. So is there any additional commentary or comments, questions from the board? Thank you so much, team. I do want to open up to public comment. Is there any public comment on our work session topic today? Okay, seeing and hearing none. We will bring it back to the board for comments and concerns to wrap up this work session. Ms. Martinez, is there anything from the board clerk's office?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Attorney Powers, anything from legal else? Anything else?
Just to note for the board that I will be in the near future presenting to the board with more information regarding impact fee analysis and some work that I'm doing on that. I will brief board members individually on some of those items, just so I can indicate overall sort of the direction, but then for conclusion of some of those efforts, I'll bring that to the table, most likely on our September 29th meeting as well. So we'll discuss things in the future.
Thank you. And for the record, September 29th is a special board meeting that this board just set, so Friday, September 9th, excuse me, September 29th at 5:00 PM. It will be publicly noticed, and that public notice comes out tomorrow, but the board just set that meeting, so that's the meeting you're speaking of.
Right. And provided that I have returns on some of the sources that I'm looking into and some of those items, then I would be addressing more on that date as well. And the purpose of the meeting isn't for that, but I would be addressing some of those.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Gullett.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board. I appreciate your authentic and robust discussion on the work that we're doing. There are just two items I feel like I need to go back to. First, Board Member Conrad, you brought up tardies, and I agree. I think we've talked about that here before, and when we do our annual updates, it may be something we want to consider adding, because the impact is still to the instructional environment. And some of that's on our transportation that we provide, and some of it's not. But regardless, having them in a seat for instruction to occur when the bell rings is important. The other is back to the alternative placements and expulsions on slide two that we just talked about. The rationale, the understanding, I think, needs to be mentioned again about why those are there. It's not to make the data look less alarming, the data is what the data is. It's to help to educate our students on the impact of decisions, right? It's about being proactive and training, and I do believe, and Mr. McFadden and I talk about this a lot, and as well as other members of the team and even principals, there are students who make choices, there are around students making other choices, and they don't understand that those decisions can lead to alternative placement consequences and expulsions. And so it's about awareness, it's about education, it's about training. And so that is the purpose of that, so that we can prevent those things from occurring. I just think that's important to underscore the rationale and the understanding of why we have those there. So, thank you, Board.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett. Dr. James.
Thank you to the team for all of the work today. I want to just acknowledge the giving that this community has experienced over the last couple of days. Give for Marion did a tremendous job. I think they doubled what they were able to raise last year. So that is such a tremendous campaign, and thank you to all of our community partners who participated and were able to raise money for the nonprofits in this community. I also want to just acknowledge that the Public Ed Foundation, which is the nonprofit for Marion County Public Schools, did experience a tragic loss. Ms. Engel has passed away, and her celebration of life will be next weekend. And so she was a cherished member of the Public Ed Foundation team, and so I know that in such a busy time, they've also had to go through and experience some really sad emotions. So I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge that our thoughts are with them. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings.
Good morning, everyone, again. Very, very, very robust, thorough conversations this morning. Board Member Conrad did bring up, and Superintendent just expanded on it again, about tardies. When we talk about absenteeism, we have to also talk about the tardies. Because it's all wrapped into one, and the Superintendent just alluded to it, that we also, as a district, have to be cognizant of what we're contributing to these tardies. With transportation, I just sent out something not too long ago. If a kid has missed an hour a day for five days a week, that's a lot of hours. That's a lot of hours. That's 100 hours a month, basically, of instruction time. That's not the kid's fault. That's not the parent's fault. That's the district's fault, because we're not getting them there on time. And let me say this, because I spoke to Ms. Dobbins this morning about this. I understand our Transportation Department is doing a heck of a job trying to get these kids to school on time. We are short on drivers. We are short on staff. So I'm going to make this appeal to our community. If you are looking for a job, we need bus drivers. We can't resolve some of the issues that we have in our district if we cannot get the kids in the seats before the bell rings. They have to be there before the bell rings, because if not, we're just kind of like the cat that's chasing its tail when they're having that much issues with getting there. And it would be, I could probably understand it if it's one singular, you know, isolated, but this is not, this is a district-wide, county-wide, where we're having this issue with transportation. And I know Ms. Dobbins and the team is working out, I'm challenging them to come up with some creative ways to get some drivers. Our union, we need you all to help us on this situation, so that we can resolve this issue and get these kids to school on time. The only way we're going to get to a district is that everybody's doing their part. And it may be, it may require us to do some things that are uncomfortable, that are not in particularly contract language and all that type of stuff, but we have to do what's best for kids. We keep saying, where every student succeed. Where every student is not succeeding, if we have kids that's getting the bus late. And it's not just, it's a community problem. And I know that people say it's a nationwide problem, but Marion County has to figure out a way to solve Marion County's issue with this. So, I'm grateful for the team that's working on this, and I look forward to what's going to happen in the days ahead, because the parents are asking, the families are asking, the community is asking, my own family is asking. And when I don't have an answer for my own family, I feel like, what, I don't have an answer. So, we have to come up with some solutions and some responses and get some action behind this. Two days ago, was it two days ago, one day ago, two days ago, we did our swearing-in of the Marion County School Board Police Department. While there may be folk in the community that says, where did this come from? Why is this happening? Is this something new? First of all, let me set the record straight. We've had the Marion County School Board Police Department for several years. The department has been active for several years. It's not new. It was enacted, I think, I think the second year of me being on the board. So that would be 2019, it came on board. However, we did not have sworn officers. So what you saw the other day was nothing more than us swearing in four officers, that staff members that were already, that already worked for the department, worked for the district, worked in the capacity. So it's nothing to be alarmed about. I don't know why folk in the community are getting alarmed as if it's something new. They've been doing the work all the time. We just add another layer of protection for the school district and for the board. So, for those that are thinking it's something, please call me, because I don't mind sharing what I know about it, because it's not new. You can go back and look at the record and see when it was created, and it's been doing the work of a police department, of a police department, of that time, they just couldn't not do all the work because they didn't have sworn officers. So, I hope that clears up anything, and if there's folk that have, please call me. I would love to expound on that if we need to. The third and final thing I have is, on Monday, I attended a teen gun violence workshop in our community. We know that we've been talking about the violence, the gun violence in Marion County, Ocala, and it's not just Ocala, it's Marion County as a whole. And one of the things that came out of this meeting, this task force meeting, is that our district has a tool that we're not really using, or has not promoted it as well as we should have. I sent an email to the attorney and the superintendent concerning it, but the TEXA tip tool, which is something that we have access to, is not being advertised in our schools. It should be on every bathroom door, it should be in every high-traffic area in our schools, so that kids know, or staff know, that they can anonymously send in a tip to prevent something from happening. I found out, I thought it was, I thought it was something that was dispersed widely throughout the district, but it's not. And that's a tool that we have, that we need to use. I've also found out that it was an issue with printing the posters. Listen, we get everything done in this district that we want to get done. Printing some posters should not hinder us from putting this in the front, in front of our schools and putting it in the proper places, those high-traffic areas, the lunchroom. Wherever kids congregate, we need to put some posters. So I'm asking our district to get with the Children's Alliance. I've sent the PDF of the flyer, of the poster to our attorney, and let's get these things posted in those areas, and let's keep them there. Let's not put them up and then take them down, let's keep them there, because we don't know when something's going to happen in any of our schools, and we just want to at least, if we can prevent it, curtail it, and utilize our Safe School Department, our law enforcement agencies in the area, that's what we need to be doing. And I think that lines up straight with this strategic goal that we were talking about today. So, whatever we can do to help, we do have a MOU, Attorney Powers, with the Children's Alliance. So whatever we need to do to get that done, I'm praying that we get that done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Ms. Conrad.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Just a thank you again to our team for all the work that you put into the presentation this morning and the work that goes daily into getting each and every one of those items completed. And I also wanted to give out a shout-out. And I also wanted to give out a shout-out. I was fortunate enough on Sunday to go to the Ocala Film Derby at the Marion Theater, which was a lot of our media kids, students that are involved in technology, similar to our media festival that we held here, but the students were mixed up. So they worked with, high school students were mixed up, and worked with different teams from different schools. And it was very exciting. They had nine hours, I believe, to create a video, and they had certain things they had to include, certain phrases, and so it was just a great opportunity to see our students collaborate and be successful within the community. So, and it was fun that actually their videos were shown at the movie theater, so thank you to all that were involved. It was a great experience. I also, I know Dr. James mentioned it, but Give for Marion really am thankful for all that, the team of people working to put that together, put in for our community. And as I sat there last night and thinking, you know, it's really hard to decide, we have so many great nonprofits, and, you know, there are so many funds between, you know, each family, each business, how do you choose? It was exciting to me, and I felt very proud to be a part of Marion County. So many of our nonprofits support the students of Marion County. They support our children. And so as I listened to the amount of money that was raised within our community yesterday, and how not only does it affect Marion County positively, but so, I don't have a percentage, but so much of it directly impacts what we're doing in our schools, and what we're trying to accomplish with our children. So I just, again, wanted to say thank you. Give for Marion was a complete success. They raised 1.4 million, I believed, which was just amazing. So thank you that everybody was involved. It does take a village, everyone working together to help our schools move forward, our community move forward, and so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Ms. Thrower, I don't believe she's with us any longer, I think the phone dropped off just a moment ago, so I'm grateful to her for being able to join us today via phone. And thank you, Board, and Dr. Gullett, and Attorney, everybody, thank you all for your concluding comments that we've had today. I'm going to start with Give for Marion, since that's what you concluded with, Ms. Conrad, and as being, four years ago, I was a part of the team that helped bring Give for Marion here, and to see what they have been able to accomplish, the first year was like $300,000 when we first did it, and it was, that was amazing, in 24 hours, $300,000. And then the next year, we did more than half a million, and it was like, wow. But what they've been able to do, even last year and this year, this year now doubling that 700-plus-thousand total that they did last year, is just amazingly astronomical. $1.4 million in 33 hours is a huge testament to this giving community, also a huge testament to the amazing work being done by the nonprofits that are then receiving those dollars. The top nonprofit that received the most donations yesterday, more than 125,000 they received, is one of our partners, The Rock. Multiple other partners within Marion County Public Schools, the Public Education Foundation, I know, cut different, yes, absolutely, but the Public Education Foundation specifically, their goal was 10,000, and they met that, I think, on day one of the two days. So it was just spectacular outpouring of support from our community, for our community, and just a big thank you to the Community Foundation and all the work that they've put in. Such valuable, important work that's being done on behalf of our community, strengthening our community, and so much, so many of those nonprofits directly touch our students, and that will help every student succeed, frankly. Just another couple of comments, I did want to mention, I was in a school last week, and it was interesting to me, because it was on Friday, and I saw some students, you know, they, I made a comment to the district administrator that happened to be with me, not planned, but we happened to be in the school at the same time, and I was thinking, I'm like, it's a Friday, you know, let's give them a little bit of a lag, it's okay that they're a little slow to get to this, or, you know, that they're excited about whatever, and this district administrator looked to me and said, Friday is 20% of our week to ensure we're having great opportunities for learning. And it just took me back. Like, I've never been a K-12 educator, I have not been, but to know the focus of our teams to say, Friday isn't just a day that we need to have a mental health day, or we need to be able to have a party every Friday, or what, no, Friday is 20% of the time we have in a given week to get good student outcomes, just really made me pause. And I'm grateful for the work the team, our administrators, our teachers are putting to that focus. It's time to get our families to understand that focus as well. So that was that for me. Just a couple of housekeeping things, I wanted to let the board know that master board training date has still not been set. We've been working diligently to coordinate, but so far, FSBA schedules and all of our schedules are not coordinating, so we are going to continue to try to look for dates, but that is not working very well right now. Also, wanting to say a thank you to Attorney Powers and the team that's been working on this impact fee conversation. I know that the county had their first workshop this week, and they'll have another one the first week of October. For us to demonstrate the extraordinary circumstances, this board, I believe, this board has, and this district has been able to do that, and so just grateful for the partnership and working towards how we're going to move forward on that. And so I'll be looking forward to Attorney Powers bringing us additional information, should there be new information to provide. And the final thing I wanted to mention is just the email that we have from Ms. Riedel about the textbook adoption. I know that I had addressed that recently, and mentioned, if anyone in the community wants to serve on a couple of these textbook adoption committees, to reach out to a board member, because we have some recommendations that are due. Our due date is October 20th, Board, so I just wanted to make you aware of that, from Ms. Riedel, for the most recent upcoming textbook adoptions, we need to have our community members recommended to her by October 20th. So with that, I think that wraps up my comments, and if there are no additional comments from anyone else, and we had no public comment today, we will conclude this school board work session at 11:13 a.m. Thank you, everyone.